Okay. This is the Planning Commission meeting, February 5th. It's a Monday. We began with a calling to meeting to order. We did not approve the minutes of January 3rd. We will do that at our next meeting. Our announcement is that we have a new planning board member to join us next month. And we are in the process of reviewing the town plan, chapter by chapter. And we are on the first chapter, Economic Development. There've been a few comments, but we will proceed.
First chapter, first sentence.
So, the other two thoughts that I had in here were, we talk about, so we talk about the green energy cluster, but then when we have this wonderful chart of data from each different industry.
Yep.
We don't have the green, and it does exist on the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
It does?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think it exists in this table, though, that I take from the state.
On the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Yeah, on the BLS side, it does, yeah.
And it's really impressive, actually, for this region.
Oh, yeah.
And then, do you talk about this sign here?
No, I don't think we, we have a funny thing about that, which is we try not to call up, and we do it a little bit.
Do you want to, should we slide it around?
Yeah, in 2013, I weren't really around.
Would you like to slide it around, something back to your head?
It was after 2012.
No.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about those.
No.
There's a chart on page seven. I just, it's just a word choice, wondering if we can change "own" on the chart to "with".
Is that what the census says?
It says, "Own children under six years old."
No, I mean, I mean the census.
The census says "own children".
Okay, it's just the, okay.
The title of the table is "People Employed With Children", so I thought it would be a sensical change now. I wouldn't want to change the census language.
Even though it's obviously weird.
Even though it's weird.
It's so weird.
It's extremely weird.
And the other two questions were, did we want to address anything about, so you have this piece on utility access and constraints for parcels in industrial districts, but I think that-
What page you want?
That's still page one. It doesn't take into account the utility access, like for fiber optic cable or super fast internet, for smaller and home businesses that aren't located in the industrial sections. I was just wondering, because you talk about access to that later, if that should be addressed here as a way to support other business.
The issue here, and it's one that is present in lots of different chapters, but is particularly problematic here, is that as a municipality, we don't have, we can whine about it, but there's not much else we can do. So, the Federal Communications Commission, which is now a lot more conservative than it was, say, I don't know, two years ago, is the federal entity that permits access to the internet and mobile phone systems, as well as landlines. We know, from recent experience, that the landline scene is problematic. We share, along with New Hampshire and Maine, the same landline telephone provider, and I can't remember even the new name of it.
Consolidated.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Went from Fairpoint to Consolidated?
Consolidated.
Right, okay, so there you go. I guess what I'm trying to say is, where we know we've got some leverage, or we know we've got some regulatory function, we can speak clearly and strongly. Where we don't, the best we can do is go, "That would be nice", which is why it turns up in the chapters, "It would be really nice", but it doesn't turn up as a goal or an action, because there isn't any action we can take officially, and therefore, there's no goal. Does that make, does that help?
It does.
But whereas pipes in the ground, you know, when you flush, or how much water you need for a manufacturing process, like making yogurt, we're totally over it. But we've got, that's also why we need to have explicit statements in this chapter about those things.
Do you think, though, could we add something, you know, a sentence to current conditions? I mean, if it's a barrier, just something that's kind of overall supportive of improvement? I don't know.
But it just, it just, I mean, it would be, for me, it's like saying, "More sunshine would be really cool." It's just not anything we've got any control over, so.
See, kind of, on the goal, see, kind of, in a big way, speaks.
Yeah. I mean, if there's, I guess what I'm saying is, if there's an opportunity for us to push, we would. And there have been times in the past when broadband wasn't even as accessible as it is now, where the town was actively pressuring, along with BDCC and other, and Windham Regional Commission and so forth, and was pushing the state to do something about it. And it was a goal of the Shumlin administration to deliver on that stuff, and they made grants to the local telecommunications companies and so forth. That whole era is gone, in more ways than one. And so, those grants have run out, the work didn't get done, the access is less of a problem, people have found different solutions, and it's somewhat stabilized. And within the heavily settled parts of Brattleboro, people's access doesn't appear to be a huge issue. I don't want to vouch for somebody trying to operate a business, an internet business, from somewhere remote, like Ames Hill Road or something, but wherever you've got cable, which is most of the built-up area of Brattleboro, most people appear to have, by U.S. standards, minimally acceptable access to do this stuff. And then, the whole question of whether we get into fiber optic and stuff is, you know, I think we want to steer away from that, to be really honest. Because there's, and there's reasons why. There's municipalities, in Vermont in particular, that have experimented with being providers of that kind of stuff, and it's pretty disastrous. So, I mean, Burlington being the case at the point. They've not yet recovered from the Burlington Telecom experiment.
Then, maybe, I mean, there is a piece about fiber optics in the downtown later on.
Yep. And fiber optic has been, you know, most of the stuff down Main Street, it's, the backbone is fiber optic. So, that's a, and that's a major improvement over 2013, when we wrote this. That's a big shift.
It's the last, last line, I would call it.
Right.
It's not necessarily the last one.
Right, so if you're, like I said, if you're on Ames Hill Road or something, yeah, that would be an issue, but if you're at Cotton Mill Hill, or a whole bunch of other places, then cooking up to an internet service is not a problem.
So, just ahead, yes or no, it's not important to support low-impact online businesses through any sort of policy, advocacy, encouragement of partners to work towards getting more access to broadband for more rural communities, for economic impact, for financial well-being of those individuals.
I think it's not so much a town function, as it is maybe the Windham Regional Commission, or the state, who could do something about it.
Right. I guess-
And the town's not.
What could we do?
The town's supportive of the state and Windham Regional Commission doing something about it, but we just, you know, and we're a member of Windham Regional Commission, but I just don't, there's little point in us making it a goal or a commitment in that way in the plan, when it's not anything we can do anything about. It's like we can't make sure that every child goes to bed happy, so we don't say that. It's not a goal.
For example, I'm a representative of the Windham Regional Commission, and once a week, we hear from the legislators, and the legislators say that they're trying to do this, that, and the other for internet, and we say-
Go for it.
Go.
Do more of it.
And-
Right.
That's what we do. And I'm representing Brattleboro on the commission, so.
And I would say, over time, I mean, it's still an issue, and depending on where you are, or what kind of business that you're trying to run, it's more of an issue for some people than it is, obviously, for others. But I would say it's less of a hot topic than it was even when we wrote the plan and prepared the plan. And that's partly to do with an improved quality of service, although I'm not going to get carried away by how good it is. Like, you know, it's clearly not like Finland, and it's not like it ever be, but it's better than it was. And so, it's not, you don't get the same drumbeat of people complaining that if only for access to high-speed internet, they'd be doing fine, or they wouldn't relocate. That's the kind of stuff we used to hear in 2012 and 2013, we don't hear it anymore. And it's a combination of things, including better access, and people's acceptance of a whole bunch of things, like new cellphone towers, and different technologies for delivering the stuff, and a whole bunch of-
And if this were, you know, the new vein, or the towns and planning commission, it would probably be in their master plan, because their service is worse.
Right.
Much worse.
Right, yeah, if you go Route 30, by the time you get to it, your town's gone.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I just-
Yeah.
I'm set on this.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to push a little bit.
No, that's fine, that's cool. It's just, it's not, like I said, it's, it's that purview thing, it's not really within the town's purview, so we just turn onto promising things we can't do without.
Next.
I have some word stuff for economic development. Just curious also, again, "Page two, ensuring that our community remains welcoming to new businesses, enterprises, and households, in support of all existing residents, comma, will require continued commitment to improve our quality of life, communications, and transportation infrastructure." Can we add, like, "existing residents and businesses"? It feels a little, "supportive of all existing residents and businesses", it feels a little exclusive, or maybe I'm just not reading the sentence.
I think, I think the way we want to, I think it's fine to add in "existing and new businesses", I mean, I'm not so sure it's my interpretation of it, we want to remain welcoming to what's here, but also, you know, be attractive to others.
Exactly.
But I think there's, it's not a big deal to add in "existing and new businesses".
Well, "existing residents and businesses", because right now, it seems, it's obvious, like, attracting new businesses is very beneficial, but then also is supportive of all existing residents and businesses. And then, that same paragraph, the last sentence, "needs while preserving Brattleboro's regional center function"? What is that? Like, is there somewhere where I can read up on what the regional function is?
So, you know how, like, Brattleboro is the main employment center for a lot of the neighboring communities, and we're the shopping area, you know, it's where-
I thought King was. I'm just kidding, that's a joke.
It is. So, anyway, you know, just a lot of people coming into Brattleboro during the-
Oh, that's planning humor.
Just a lot of people coming in to shop and to work during the day.
Okay, so there's just means-
So, we feel like the regional hub, so it's the largest town in the county.
Hospital, high school.
Yeah, we've got the main services.
Yeah, they treat the hospital and the high school are the three biggest employers in town. Or that, that retreat, the hospital and the school system.
Yep.
It's not so common.
Right.
I didn't know, because the way it's worded, it's like, is there like a whole section over here, or like, what?
There is discussion, actually, somewhere else-
I did read that.
About, about the regional center function.
Regional hub.
Right.
We call it a regional hub.
Right.
One more thing, I think, and then I'll leave.
Okay, good.
Page three, the third paragraph, "I.e., food processing industry clusters", there's that "clusters" word again.
Yep.
"A critical mass of enterprises and institutions-related fields employing skilled workers". Can we say just "employing workers" instead of "skilled workers"?
No, because it's a key, it's a key part of the cluster definition, that it's the skills, the workers-
Goddamn clusters.
It's the skills of the workers that are common, right?
Yeah.
So, that's, there's a symbiotic relationship, or a positive relationship, between businesses that employ people with similar backgrounds and skills, and then multiplying.
Yep.
And then, the people with those skills have got more employment opportunities, which then makes more businesses more successful, which then grows more related opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely, I hear that.
So, if you drop skilled-
Yeah.
Then it just becomes workers, and then actually, there's nothing, to be blunt about it, I mean, that's, that's your sort of low-end retail fast-
You're matching skilled workers with a particular industry, so that, the point is that that's what we're fostering.
And even though lots of people have good, you know, have got, have got jobs at fast-food restaurants in town-
Yeah.
It's not anything that we're explicitly and specifically trying to support and grow, because they're regarded as low-skill, you know, positions.
Yeah, and I'm not even saying, like, low-skilled position, I'm just saying, like, you know, what I see, like, employing skilled workers, like, skilled workers, obviously, it's attractive, especially, like, you know, bringing the manufacturing jobs in, and like, you know, CNC machines and people-
Right, it's people with specific skills for that industry.
Definitely, yeah, high-paying jobs and such, you know, a ton of value in that, absolutely. But then, there's also still, like, you know, people currently living in town that don't have skills, but they want to work, you know, and so, you know, what about, is there somewhere in this paragraph we can at least add that to, or maybe adding "fields employing skilled workers and non-skilled workers"?
I think, actually, that's better handled in the community development stuff towards the end of the chapter.
It's also, I think, a little bit in education.
And it's handled in education.
Because workforce training.
Cool. Because don't, and I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to get a sense, just, you know, just trying to get a feel on, you know, what all this means, and, yeah, so no, I don't feel like I'm pushing anything, except, you know, understanding.
Greater understanding is a very good goal.
Exactly.
At the time when the, when the town plan was written in 2013, actually, everything leading up to it, there was this big scoping group, and the two areas that people felt, you know, the most pressing needs were economic development and energy.
Yeah.
And, you know, looking for higher-paying jobs for the community-
Yeah.
That could employ people with lots of skills, but-
Absolutely, and like, the, what gets me, being on the Planning Commission, what gets me most excited is the economic development piece of it. And so, I just don't want to lose sight of, you know, the unskilled workers and laborers, there's still some value in that, you know, and so, I don't want to just, you know, always completely drive home skilled workers, you know, if there's an area that we can add in.
But we won't put it in in the section with the cluster, because the cluster has a specific definition.
Okay, so, because we're still on cluster things, I think I just need to do, so where, Rod, where were you saying, there's something that touches on that somewhere else?
Um.
Well, there's the education section.
There's the education section, there's the education chapter, and then in this chapter, it's community development, page eight.
Okay. I feel like I'm learning a lot. I think that that is all that I have for, so.
Okay.
Jessica?
I don't have anything till the next chapter.
Whoa.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. Energy. Who'd like to begin?
We have a rogue 3.1.4.
Yes, and I noticed that too. Just back in there.
Maybe we'll find something in the next five minutes to put in there.
Okay. So, you should know that the tables are going to get updated, the energy committee and the other town staff are pulling together data, so that we can update, hopefully, the tables, like, Table 3.3, 3.4, where we go from 2010 to maybe 2015 or something. It's a little odd, because we've obviously got this nice 10-year break here, but, yeah, we'll basically just update it with more recent figures. I should say, we're hopeful that this building, among others, that the town operates and owns, should show some improvement in energy consumption associated with lots of work in the last couple of years.
But there'll be a new building for the police, right?
We won't have any information on that.
We won't have any information on that.
So, we can take that?
And we will have maybe some new information for the Westby Firehouse, but I doubt that. And we won't have anything for the new firehouse, so there'll be, obviously, there'll be things that are a little, you know, patchy. But we could say, in each of those cases, that each of those buildings meets the state energy code requirements, because that was a requirement to each one of them, and so therefore, they'd all be more efficient than the buildings were previously.
That's good.
So, I have a question.
Okay.
First, I thought we were gonna maybe take out the collective purchasing program for some of the renewables, because that was, that was maybe a thing that they're not considering anymore.
Well, particularly seeing now that you kind of-
Now that it's in the crapper.
Yeah.
That's a technical term, right?
Yeah, that's right. That's right after the cluster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, then, I was wondering if there is a way to tie the new market tax credit districts to energy-efficient development, having some sort of development requirement or additional incentive?
Well, if the new market tax credits don't have a condition, I wouldn't want to put a condition on it.
They don't, and yeah, if you did that, you'd basically walk out of that marketplace. So, we don't get to put conditions on new market tax credits, I mean, we could, but it's pretty much like narrowing down the possibility of getting one. So, it's a complex process of actually trying to sell, sell your project to these faceless people who've got these tax credits to spend. And so, if you make it more difficult rather than less difficult, then they're already gonna, they're just gonna walk, and you'll never know, they just won't, you know, it just won't, that transaction just won't take place. So, it's unlikely that we were contemplating doing something that would make us less competitive in new market tax credits, rather than more.
And the economic development section doesn't say we're only going to foster green development, it says we're going to foster development.
Development, that's what it worries, if it's something to the environment.
Well, what I'd say is, any new construction would have to meet, or any major refit would have to meet the current energy code, which is a lot tougher than anything that's pre-existing. So, even a building that had been significantly refurbished, say, five years ago, and met what, then, if for some reason or another, you wanted to redo it now, it's going to be a lot tougher from an energy code standpoint than it was even five years ago, so.
I was just looking for a way to tie the renewable energy goals with the development plans, but-
In an ideal world, they would tie something like that to a commitment.
Right.
But it's, it's, we can't-
You don't really want to risk that.
It would be counterproductive, it would just be like saying, "We don't want to play", right? Whereas actually, we do want to play.
We do want to play.
Yeah, it's just like taking your ball and going home. It's hard enough, apparently, even to obtain new market tax credits for downtown redevelopment projects that involve housing of any kind, at this point, relative to other projects in other parts of the country. So, we're already in a tough place, competition-wise, because that would be most of what we would want to do.
We do have something in the economic development chapter about creating a plan for the new market tax-
Yes, we do.
Credit districts, so that could be, that could be a good place, though, to-
Right.
To think about renewable energy.
Right. And we don't have a-
Can we put something, can we put something in there about considering addressing some energy policies through the new market tax credits? Nothing, nothing serious, nothing like in stone, just like, consider as an action. Wow.
For example, I hate to keep harping on this, but my husband has, is a green energy professional. Nobody limits the amount of electricity that he uses in that activity. You know, he does what he has to do to, but in the big picture, he's an energy saver, but no one constricts, you know, his use of energy-
To get there.
-in doing it.
Right.
And, God forbid that you would, because then he wouldn't be able to function.
Right, I don't think I'm talking about restricting energy use, I think I'm talking about including renewable energy elements in new development.
I guess what I'm, the way I would approach it is that, for the most part, in terms of the area that is eligible for new market tax credits, it's downtown, and-
Isn't Putney Road also?
No.
Oh.
It's downtown from here, basically, this street, Grove Street, and Harris Place, all the way to the Guilford border, and so, it takes in Canal Street and that area, so it's an already built-up, you know, and it goes as far west as South Street. So, certainly by Vermont standards, it's a pretty well-developed area, and also has some of the pockets of the most entrenched need, and any investment that's likely to take place in that part of town, that's going to result in construction and jobs, would be good, because it would be a smart growth kind of initiative, which means that people should be able to access whatever it is, employment, or educational opportunities, or whatever the project is, without necessarily having to drive, or driving a great distance. And so, there are energy benefits from, sort of, coming from that being the district that we're focusing on. So, and, you know, you could contrast that, we're not promoting more development on Putney Road, or more development out on West Brattleboro, that would, that would make it more difficult for people to access those opportunities. So, I think on balance, it's, you know, it's not, it's not everything, but it's not, it's not horrible from that standpoint. And I think that if we're going to engage in a master plan, or some kind of planning process around the new market tax credit district in itself, that means that's one of the things that should come up, but I don't think we should get into saying, kind of like, predetermining the direction that that plan takes before we do the work for that plan, if that makes sense.
And I don't know if it makes you feel any better, but one of our development review criteria, when you know if the hospital's doing expansion, or whatever, I mean, there is something about reducing energy, and it's interesting, you know, I mean, I think most of these projects that we see are kind of really on the edge of making financing work, and so, they do what they can, you know, sometimes it's, well, usually, there's electric car charging that we require, but we're also encouraging them to look at solar, or pellets, or, you know, something else. So, it is something that is considered, and that they do need to address in the development review process.
Right.
So, it's not like it's just kind of left alone.
They can't skip over it, they have to, they have to answer questions as to, you know, "What have you done to explore energy conservation and renewable energy generation as part of your project"? And, you know, typically, they come back and say, "We looked at it, and we can't afford it", or something like that, or that the return on it is too far out, or "We've got some other technical problem, we've got helicopters, and we don't want, you know, we've got a conflict with them, and solar panels", or whatever it is. So, they've got a reason, but they've had to look at it, and they have to answer in a coherent way, that, "Yeah, we looked at it, and we're doing this", or whatever it is.
Okay. I'm very satisfied with those answers from the-
I'm interested in that. So, are you talking about incentivizing, like, new construction for renewable energy- for uh renewable energy uh concentration? Or like if like a builder is building a building or adding on or doing a major project, the town incentivizing somehow? And then this program, I have no idea what you guys are talking about. So is there any way? Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, is there any way we can add to the like uh to the chapter potentially that as Brattleboro goes forward, we'll be like exploring uh more incentivizing or more incentives for people that may pop up or exist in the future?
I think the big question there is what what does a municipality can we meaningfully do? And I don't think we've got the resources to and.
What if resources pop up in the future, though?
Well, you know, we've always kind of explored, I mean, you know, like the case district. Like, that's one that the Energy Committee spent a lot of time on, is a way to kind of allow homeowners to put solar panels on their house and, you know, I mean, I think as things come up, the Boeys been.
Always been supportive of that.
Right, but in terms of like.
Word in on this.
Well, let's take the land use, for example. I mean, there's only certain things that the master plan can do. We've 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 written this plan and we've changed the development regulations. We can't make anybody develop anything.
I just, I like where Jessica's going with this in the sense of like just having like some sort of like couple sentences saying like, we'll give you a pat on the back, you know, or like a high five or something, or considering solar panels on your new building.
Right. Well, there is the new energy code and there are things in here already. But I'm just saying that um we want people to develop and we want new businesses and we want, yeah, and we want old businesses and we want all that. But if we start to put conditions on it, people will be.
I don't hear asking for conditions.
Well, people will be skittish.
That would be how it's interpreted.
Would be in land use.
Because we don't have incentives in terms of
Financial.
Carrots. We only have sticks.
Small property tax.
Yeah, we we don't have that.
Yeah, or which is not a very big state. So if it was New York or Massachusetts and they really wanna switch from fossil fuel to renewable energy, they've got the resources to make that happen on so many different levels that businesses and homeowners can participate in that. But even if you did a residential solar panel project in the last four or five years through Green Mountain Power, you're out of luck, like they're not buying. So, you know, you can offset the cost of your bill, but people were trying to offset the the installation cost and the upfront cost of the panels and it's it's already not working out. And the town can insert itself there and make up the difference. It's not like we can go out there and go, oh, so if it was just for this, for the sake of a million dollars, you would do solar panels, here's a million dollars. Like, we can't do it and we don't wanna even get anywhere near making that kind of a commitment. So.
But like the city of Keene has a a program where if you meet certain energy standards, then you get certain um development standards relaxed for your building. Like, there was a building built on Keene State College that incorporated some really cool sustainability stuff. And then they were allowed to build an extra floor in their building that was not normally allowed in that part of Keene. So it was a, it was an incentive related to.
So exploring other incentive options.
Yeah, I think that was mentioned somewhere in here, too. Um, just, yeah.
Um.
Need it to the goals or actions, but.
I do have one plan here in development that I think are duplicated as a one. There was one that that we had looked at.
The conservation.
No.
There's other, I thought there was another one that maybe.
Right. You're part of the complication.
I don't think there's anything in this plan that would preclude
Right.
anything like that happening.
I'm trying to think that through. I I mean, the other part that I'd say there is that, again, I'm not sure how it's done in New Hampshire, but I think it's somewhat similar. So the land use, like, yeah, you get in there, you get a bonus floor. That's kind of cool.
It wasn't for them because it was a dorm, so.
Yeah.
Right. I know, it's cool, it's a good idea. If we were if we were gonna do that through terms of energy efficiency or conservation, that's pretty straightforward. If it was generation, it gets a little trickier, because again, we're out of the regulatory loop on somebody getting a permit for generation. So anything over a certain size, anything under five kilowatts, basically, it's a practically no permit at all. And above five kilowatts, it's definitely the Public Utility Commission. And they're the ones that decide whether it's viable or not and whether it's gonna work or not. And they're the ones that permit it and we don't have any role in that process where.
We're excluded.
We we can comment on it, but in very limited terms. And so I guess what this chapter reflects, and to some extent, the land use, the energy discussion in land use reflects is, again, municipalities in Vermont have very little to do in the regulatory framework to do with at least renewable energy generation. So you, you know, um, it's not and then, you know, even though so the picking and choosing thing ends up being, you know, it's really hard to actually offer incentives for a program that you have no participation in, you know what I'm trying to say? It's like I was saying, you know, if you buy a a hybrid, we'll discount your your registration. We can't do it, because we're not the, we're not, we're not, we're not the people that do the registration.
Parking pass, we're not that.
Oh, yeah, we're really gonna do that. Yeah, but you see what I'm saying? It's just like, it's not our thing to do. And so it's really hard for us to come up with mechanisms that use somebody else's uh authority to deliver some kind of a benefit, I guess. But the
I'm I'm good, I'm good.
The 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 extra floor, I mean, it's kind of interesting to think about that one.
Yeah.
I have to think about it some more. It's kind of cool.
Yeah.
All right.
Agriculture?
So, oh, wow, that's good.
We think some of them are later stuff.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Agriculture? Okay. What's next?
Except that was really good. Good job.
Education, chapter five.
Reading through this, I remembered why this section.
I should read it.
The first time around, which was that the planning part of the town gives a lot of autonomy to the school board to do what they want. So I was thinking about that as I was taking notes. So, do any, somebody else, please start.
Does anyone else have any comment? Back to you, Jessica.
Um, so one of the things I was uh wondering is if we can add a policy or action about lifelong learning, which is one of the things you talk a lot about. Um, as far as what the library does, providing resources and then access through the community education center and.
Book finding, very informative, yes.
I went to that last week.
It's a cutting edge skill.
Yeah. I'm moving into the eighteenth century.
So how's that work out with your Kindle?
Duck tape on the Kindle.
I I I wrote one.
Yeah, that's it.
Does this sound okay?
Sure.
So provide public access to education, training, books and online resources and cultural content or experiences through the town library.
That sounds great.
That's excellent.
Can I take a picture of that? I'm just gonna have to write it.
And then the other um the other piece that's that's a little bit in the text, but not in the policies or actions is about how schools are um in a real way um becoming community hubs and resources for their neighborhoods.
I just had a conversation.
Oh, good. Oh, that's good.
Well, yeah, good, but um the observation was made that a long time ago, um the schools were, the district for each elementary school was, you know, geographical. There was a neighborhood, you were, you were in the Green Street neighborhood, which is a Green Street school, right? And if you're in Westby, you went to Academy. And that many years ago, in an effort to overcome social stratification across the schools, they mixed all the kids up. But what maybe has happened as a consequence is that neighborhoods have become less distinct and kids don't know their neighbors and the parents of the kids are not self-identifying as neighbors, you know, like. So the community function of the school, wherever it is, is less prominent than maybe it once was. So it's an interesting debate, but also not something that we can really engage in direct like.
So we used to be a two block walk from Green Street School and now we're a two block walk from Oak Grove. But we still know about and attend events at both of them now.
Okay, that's cool.
Um, because that's.
You can.
Community.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I don't know. I I think that particularly with with the goals around neighborhood building, that schools could be noted as a potential part of that.
Okay.
This is one.
Where did you wanna, did you wanna, what were you thinking of that?
Is that in your picture?
Is that a goal or are you, were you thinking of elevating it or do you want it part of the discussion?
As an action.
Okay.
Somehow.
Some somewhere.
And what I think is is actually pretty unique about the school population versus the greater Brattleboro population is that there's a lot more diversity in the schools and a lot of opportunity to learn about cultural diversity.
Is that in a wider community? All right, yeah, okay.
I have one one question and you can just tell me, this doesn't belong here, which is fine, because I'm not really sure.
Why don't you ask the question first?
So the question is, um, we do touch on early education a little bit in here, but I'm wondering about not just financing early education, which is five, one, two, but access to early education. There are waiting lists of whole preschools here, as far as I know. Um, and I'm in a bunch of mommy Facebook groups and it comes, it's like a continual topic.
I'm sure it is.
You're having a baby before it's born, get on the waitlist for preschools.
Wow.
So.
Are we a man?
I don't know.
I see, gonna be, I'm gonna be.
I just have a a shortage of childcare.
I'm just, I'm hearing that from people. I've got my child on a couple of waitlists.
The cost of quality childcare.
It's really, really.
So, I mean, it's not just childcare, but it's it's, I know that there's a credit from the state, but it's, it only funds ten hours, which most of them don't do just ten hours. So there's an accessibility issue there if you can't fund the rest of it. But it's also, it's just the number of slots available seems to be exceeded by the, I don't know if there's been like something in the water and that there seems to be a lot more babies in our slots coming into the world.
There were two babies at Duo once Friday night. That was a little strange.
Do, but not Friday night, that's.
That's existed.
So I I mean, I don't know, it, you can say, you know, maybe that's not an area that the town would be working. That's like a state level thing and I'm almost like not sure myself.
Because that's a concern that we aren't aware of, so I think it's good to bring to our attention.
Turn into an action, it could be a conver- like a discussion under the early education.
Yeah, mo- most of the suffering there was financial related. And I mean, I can say things great, even if it only funds ten hours, it's better than nothing.
But if demand exceeds the supply, that should be.
Demand's exceeding the supply and I also, when I looked on the places that do show on their website, you know, what their setups are, very few of them do just a ten hour program. Most of them, you have to commit to something quite big.
Bigger than that.
Well, that's really significant, because everybody says that, you know, childcare and early education are the things that bring people in the community. We're desperate to bring new families into the community. So that would be, if it were, if that demand were met, it could be a real selling point.
Yes.
I mean, this is the thing, I tell people, I I bought my second home, so it was easier to get a mortgage and bring the mother here to have her watch my kids than it was.
Wow.
I can do that, but not look at it, so.
So what's the hesitation with uh like, I know nothing about parenting or schooling. What was, what's the, what's the hard part for people starting early education programs? Why are people doing it?
There aren't enough slots.
So you mean, what is a new programs also?
It doesn't pay well.
Right.
It's a ton of work. Um, you need to get, you need certain certifications, you need your space to be.
There's a lot of oversight by the state.
So what can we do to make it easier?
That's what I don't know. That's what kind of why I was like, I don't know, it's like a town.
That's my child.
You know, like you're saying earlier, is this even something the town can even make?
In the previous plan, we actually had a specific um action that we would encourage um childcare operators to access the Small Business Assistance Program for funding. And I took it, and that was in the economic development chapter, I think. And I took it out partly because even though we did really try, we didn't score once in the intervening five years. And it's um and talking to Chad and a bunch of other people involved in early ed, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem to address the issue, so um.
They're looking at the state level, I know, because I think it comes up on VPR periodically. I think it was like a, I think it was like three sixty, something, not Anderson Cooper, but something.
That's good.
That's that's looking at the state um level and they keep having meetings in town, but they're always like, I can't get there because of work, you know.
Right.
Vent your frustrations.
Send your mother.
So.
So can we add that back to the economic development?
Uh, we could. I mean, the only reason I dropped it is that we weren't, it it never happened and I was like, yeah, you know.
And there's nothing that precludes these, like, so somebody's saying forward.
Yeah, we wouldn't say, go away, we're not doing that anymore. We would just go, okay. So but it was more when I talked to Chad and others about what the issues were, that the that it's the other costs that, uh, he actually used to be from Building Bright Futures, but he's recently resigned. So there's a.
Oh, Chad Simmons.
Yep.
Okay.
So I, you know, maybe we wanna explore that question a little bit further and see why we could be supportive. That was meaningful, I guess. I think he pointed to a whole bunch of other things, mostly to do with there's a wild mismatch between, you know, people's ability to afford childcare and the places that you can send your kids and it's it's expensive and not very good quality fairly frequently. Or it's, that might not be the fairest way of saying it, but it's it's expensive and it's uncertain, you know, like they're very small providers, like they're in the home or something, they decide to stop doing it.
Are they going on vacation for two weeks?
Or they're going on vacation for two weeks, that's right. Or, you know, whatever it is, and then, you know, you don't have coverage. And so as a working parent, you just can't be in a situation like that, that's so um.
Stress inducing.
Right, just not consistent. You need something that's really solid and that your kid likes to go to, otherwise you're like, no, life is a complete and utter nightmare. And it could go on for years and years and years.
Your mom?
She is not gonna last.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow. So, yeah. Yeah, maybe we should look at it. I I don't know where.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just something I dropped out of. Yeah, I don't know, it's just something I dropped out of.
Well, I think that, that's really important and.
Right.
I agree, it should be mentioned.
Okay. And maybe it's better off in this section than it is in the economic development section. I'm not entirely sure, I mean, I don't know, or both.
Think of something to say and put it both places.
Yeah, with the cost reference.
That's my modus operandi.
Well, I mean, it's interesting, I mean, we talk about early education in this chapter and we talk about childcare, I mean, because they, they can be, they can be the same, but they can also be different. I mean, infant care, you know, getting back into the workplace funding history of urban is different than a four-year-old.
Early school is important, whether, whether, who the parents are working.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Education, any more comments on education?
One little one.
Mm-hmm.
Goal B, establish strong cooperative relationship between the town and higher education institutions located in, we had and around.
Somewhere near.
They all seem to be leaving.
You mean Keene again?
Yeah. Well, certainly Marlborough.
Yeah, uh, I had that circled, because in the, in the space of time it's taken us to write this, things are a little different. Um, yeah, I think we can do that.
That's a good catch.
Yeah. So you do mean Keene.
I swear, every time I like, I went, when I went back to review this, I was like, oh, SIT, that's changed.
Is it changing in 2015?
Yes.
Yeah, it's changing.
It's changed now, it's changed.
They're finishing up their grad student.
Oh, really?
John, I'll go later.
Really?
Okay, housing. Any comments?
Not really. It's nice when you got it.
Jessica, we can only applaud your thoroughness, so go right ahead.
Yeah.
If I had more time to go through this, I would probably have some.
Okay, look, we still have provide density bonuses for energy addition setting and construction.
Yes, for housing, for housing, yeah.
Well, it's cool, it's very cool.
Um. Uh, okay. I'm, I, I, it sounds really scary on action 6.1.1. Threats to neighborhood stability. And the way it's discussed later in the chapter, threats to neighborhood stability. You're talking about rental housing and turnover in residential populations. And I feel like it really has. It's, it's language that really can feel classist and racist.
That's not the intent. The intent is to get at landlords that don't maintain their buildings.
It's like peeling paint.
It's poor, it's poor quality housing for anybody to be in, um, because there's a lot of that in Brattleboro. It's, it's a failure to upkeep and provide quality housing is really what it's supposed to be.
Cool.
Not.
It just comes off as a little.
What page is 6.1?
Synophobic.
I'm not gonna be synophobic, but just like, it's, I mean, it clearly, like, people of lower income have a lot of turnover in their housing. It's mentioned in this plan, it's talked about, and it's also identified as a threat to neighborhood stability. And yes, and also, I don't know, it just, it feels, it feels like it's framed as something that could be like, I don't know.
It's, it's also, so several towns in Vermont have building codes. And so, for example. And the ability to enforce them. And like, for example, Fellow's Falls does. Quite frequently.
Oh, Fellow's Falls.
And we don't have anything like that and we have some buildings that are, you know.
So rather than saying establish building codes, you said this, right?
Right.
Because at the time, we were getting some push for establishing a building code and being able to do something about some of the quality of the housing.
Yeah. So it's, it's more to.
See how it could be written.
It's more as a benefit to the residents than it is that, of course, that any of the residents are threatening. It's, it's the housing stock that needs to be maintained.
Right, right.
So there's a paragraph on page 43. Just above the subhead. Starts cohesive neighborhoods.
Starts where?
It starts with the phrase cohesive neighborhoods. Read out of context and read without whose explanation.
And with that, yeah.
Yeah, this is pretty offensive.
Yeah, very much what I think.
This is pretty offensive.
So it was ditched.
Yeah, so I think we should just ditch it.
Thanks.
I think it was in response to stuff that we were dealing with.
Yeah.
And things have moved on and we're still, we're still dealing with it, I mean, yeah. And the reality is that we don't have building codes, we're not going to get building codes and we don't have very many tools to urge landlords in particular to maintain rental properties in a minimally acceptable way. And the single biggest victims of their negligence or sometimes, I guess, a financial struggle to do that is the tenants themselves and their, and their children. I mean, you know, it's poor quality housing for the people that's in the housing first and foremost. So, um, but this paragraph doesn't need to stay there.
Cool. Um, I was wondering if we could get some data on, uh, second home numbers?
We don't have very much.
The only way we would get.
Just sort of make the, the chart on demographics for housing a little clearer.
It's gonna be really bad if it comes from the census.
It's garbage from the census.
It is. I can get the number of second homes, I'm pretty sure.
When do we get it? Because you don't, there's a weird thing around the homestead tax. So when you, when you're a resident, you get to claim the homestead tax. But there's something funky and upside down on Brattleboro so that.
Well, it's the whole education funding.
Sorry, this is not clear reading.
What did you think we were playing?
That would be so much more fun if we were reading a play right.
I was about to offer a, a couple of paragraphs to read, but, um, he looked pretty.
To plan or not to plan?
When, I, Jess, I wonder, like, what are you looking for in the second home? Like, are you just kind of curious about it? It's really low in.
Okay.
Brattleboro, like statistically, I think it's not even 1%. Um, so are you trying to go somewhere with it?
I was trying to go somewhere with it, um, and I don't remember where it was.
Okay.
They pay more education tax.
And use less education.
Yeah, and you use less education, because.
We need more of it, but.
Right, I, I don't think it's a significant factor in, um, in the residential real estate market in Brattleboro.
In surrounding towns it is, but not here.
Because second homes sort of take that.
Yeah, and there is something really funky, right. It's not always the case that, there's something funky with the way the homestead tax works, so, yeah.
All right, page 32. Just wondering, in our current day, uh, world, about, uh, listing statistics about single mothers, um, and not single fathers, um.
The census doesn't break it out. But they break out, they only list the single mothers.
The single, yeah, the, the categories are women-headed.
Maybe a spouse.
Right, women-headed, yeah, it's still, we're still struggling with their terminology. Women, women-headed, single.
Households.
Adult households is a category in the census and not single men.
Well, I know some lesbian couples that don't have a husband present.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't say heterosexual, it just says single mother households.
Right.
Anyway.
And they is being, US Census is leaving that out.
Yeah, footnote two breaks it out.
I don't know.
Right.
I, I can take a look at the language, I try to follow like, what the census says because they're.
We have to stick with the census because in the long run, we're going to be comparing it to the next census.
So it's gonna be another census.
Assuming that there ever is another one. I think, um, it's fake news, so we're just gonna stop doing it. Um, so, uh, I, yeah, I agree, we, I mean, you know, we could.
Can we add a sentence in there that says?
We should probably think of having a footnote or something, the first time we quote US Census data and say, look, it's not our idea to.
Brattleboro apologizes for insensitive.
These really dumb categories, but.
Can we get John Cleese's voice?
That's right, yeah, so John Cleese's kind of like.
I was a census collector and I had to ask some very strange questions of people.
And you get very strange answers.
And you get very strange answers.
So, Jess, to answer your question, I mean, when I look at a footnote here, same-sex couple households with no relatives of the householder or present are tabulated as in non-family households.
Wow.
Non-family households also include people who live alone nor, non-relatives living together.
Not to be confused with a non-person household, which is an even worse category.
I was wondering why Brattleboro had a really high number of non-family households.
Bacon?
Or do you just leave it to the dogs?
You leave it to the dogs.
So, so family households, yeah, family households do not include same-sex married couples.
What page are you on?
It's on the footer on page 44.
Right.
Well, it's because in 2010, when that census happened.
Yeah, but it's, it's.
Marriage was not a federal thing.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's no better now.
Is it not? They're not, of course, they're not gonna.
Yeah, come on.
As we said, we're lucky we have.
Every time they suggest something like that, they give us money, so they've been trained to not ask for anything.
It's like you can't ask for funding for anything from the federal government now that addresses climate change, we'll just throw it out.
Right.
I'm glad you put all these footnotes in.
Yeah.
We have to explain the census because it's.
Good, it's kind of good.
Inexplicable.
Yeah.
Right. That's the other thing, so, um, Sue and I have been having this discussion, we're gonna do it this time around, but I would say the next time we do a real rewrite of the plan, we're gonna ditch all this demographic stuff because the census is, doesn't operate the same way anymore, the tenure census is not really very relevant anymore and it's all accessible, you know, via the wonders of Google. And so.
Doesn't look like they're information from the census.
Good, so if you've got a, if you've got a demographic question, you're not gonna go to the town plan as the repository of all this really accurate, well-curated information, you're just gonna pick up your phone and ask the question.
Yeah.
So, you know, the obligation for us to use the town plan as this repository for all this official information and data, it's going away and it's of limited value.
There is, um, an appendix, actually, all the appendix will probably go away, but there's an appendix that is just some of the census data.
Base data.
But it, most of it appears, anything important appears in the text and because the only reliable census data is the 2010 census data, once you get into the American Community Survey, especially in rural areas, there is a wide, um, swing variation in its accuracy.
Yeah, the.
So I think we're, we're gonna, now we're eight years away from the 2010 census.
So the change in Brattleboro's population is a fraction of the margin of error for the accuracy of the survey in the first place.
We have this one person that keeps going over the river and back, over the river.
Right, it's, yeah, right, you know, some days we catch them and some days we don't, you know, it's like, it's just, so, yeah, okay.
Chapter seven?
Oh. I just had a couple of questions about, um, uh, encourage and implement residential development practices that result in more innovative housing options for diverse populations while fostering sustainable development. And the action has to do with making sure people don't build things in flood hazard areas.
Told you.
I did, where's the, where's the inclusivity or diversity in, in that? One action under that.
Pretty much you can do whatever you want, what we're gonna do in the floodway.
This is our post-Irene plan.
You know what, if we're really into innovative options and diverse populations, maybe pull in some of those thoughts that are written out so nicely about accessory dwelling units and aging in place and, um, that's.
Again, you know, this, this report was originally focused on post-Irene because that was very.
I think it's pretty funny.
This is new.
So what are you suggesting that we encourage them to build a boat? Houseboat?
Yeah.
No, it says outside flood hazard areas.
And, and also, I think we all need to just keep in mind that this is, um, this isn't a whole rewrite of the town plan, that will come in later years. So this is a fix to get us into the appropriate spot that we need to get out.
So you want.
I just want to make sure.
This one, I, if I can recall that.
Diversity has come up a lot in town conversations recently.
I think with this.
Sort of a snub, I feel like.
This, um, this also came from, at the time, with the mobile home park, the tri-park, they were looking at replacing, you know, with these Vermont things, which were like kind of tiny houses, kind of, but more on foundations and we're like, I don't know, they have to be out, what about putting, you know, an apartment building or something and getting them out of the floodway? Anyway, so.
Yeah, it has a particular, again, it has a particular genesis, but yeah, it doesn't quite, the action doesn't really go to the policy, I'll, I'll grant you that.
Um.
I think we tried everywhere we could to get buildings out of the floodway and, and I think we should be applauded for succeeding.
I just had a weird choice question on page 41, the first paragraph there, um, about what Groundworks does. Groundworks provides a day shelter with a community food shelf, support services and a place for homeless and lonely people to come. Lonely people?
Yeah.
Okay, just, I don't know what that means, so.
It's a little weird.
Well, you know, loneliness is.
I took it from their website, to be honest.
Loneliness is a big thing, actually.
It sure is, but I, do they support just lonely people?
Yeah.
Do?
Yeah.
Cool.
You know, like immediately thinks, even if it's Groundworks, but.
Right, right, like, come be part of our activities.
It's not, it's called, uh, Groundworks Collaborative, isn't it?
Yes.
It's like a legal statement. That's changed since.
Okay.
I have a request.
Yes.
I have to write a paper tonight.
Yes.
Uh, it's 7:30 and we're not done, can I make my vote in advance or?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, guys.
Absolutely.
I didn't mention that at the beginning of this.
We'll have a call.
What's the paper on, we'll write it now.
What's the paper about? We can fix that problem. Is it about census?
Okay, chapter seven, transportation. Any comments?
I put some hearts next to some things.
Really?
Oh, yeah, bicycle storage in the downtown.
Oh, yeah.
She's really happy.
All righty.
All right.
As far as goals, I was wondering if you wanted to mention anything about Route 9, Route 30 and, um, 91 being like tourist trails and Route 9 being now designated as a historic cultural something byway?
Oh.
Molly Stokke? Molly Stokke?
That now Brattleboro is on a cultural byway.
Hasn't that always?
It's been on the Molly's.
Ever since Molly Stokke kicked the bucket, I think.
It was supposedly designated as a cultural byway, I think, 87 or 88 years ago.
Did she die a little?
I think I've always seen those signs.
Yeah, it's been here forever.
She did die earlier than that, but, I don't know, I think it was a thing, anyway.
Okay.
I just, um, tourism's not connected in one of the goals for transportation and I feel like it should be.
Yeah.
So maybe you should pay attention to that.
Yeah.
Pay attention to the tourists that lousy drivers or?
Well, I mean, they're coming through. You know, but, but there's, there's a lot of stuff about the traffic and beautifying and all of that and, and not, it's not only a benefit for us as drivers, but it also, you know, to attract people, so having a healthy and beautiful transportation byway.
I'm not opposed to that. I mean, think about like, you know, what we talked about with the ninety-one bridge, you know, like we're the gateway, so, you know.
Yeah, that's great. And in a sense, we're more than a gateway because we want people to come here. But it's interesting too, though, because in the energy plan, you know, the state energy plan wants us to stop driving. But we want tourists and we, they're going to come and they're going to drive and we want to encourage that. So it's, I think it's a flaw in the state energy plan that they don't address tourism.
I like the idea of recognizing that's at one, two, and three as, you know, valuable parts of...
Do we do that already or you?
No, I don't know. I, no, I'm not, I'm not, uh...
Okay.
Okay, any more comments on transportation?
Just giving some thought to... No, I don't know what that now means. I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Alrighty. Chapter eight, arts and culture.
I believe the Bureau of Labor Statistics also has data on arts and culture businesses, so pulling that out would go along with the arts and culture disparity data would be awesome. And I can send you codes.
Yep.
What kind of codes are needed?
NICS.
NICS.
Can I share a Google sheet with you or is that...?
No, you can.
That's all I have to say. It was really nice.
Okay. Anyone else? Arts and culture? Going ones? Scenic res, historic and scenic resources does not have a number on it. I would assume it would be nine.
It would be nine.
There, I've made a comment. Anyone else? I think the comments that I was looking for are in here, so.
Yeah.
Unkeydoken.
What's the other part? It isn't here.
I thought there was discussion.
There is Molly Stark.
Yeah, good old Molly.
Go Molly. Yeah, look at that.
Yes. Go to sixty-two. I would say the first paragraph. Yeah.
Watched a great video of the woman that is diving in the retreat and looking at the Confluence of the West River trying to find him. It's her speech before the, we might have to start this.
So actually, there's a typo here. So where life and afterlife, where celebrated, but where, where life? Anything else?
I was just curious if we could get something in there about health and wellness industries in Brattleboro through those sentences.
Are they a cluster?
They were.
Some water curers and that, I mean, going back to the mid-1800s, Brattleboros.
I mean, are you looking for more than a sentence or two?
No, just a sentence or two about...
Because I can...
Brattleboro being known for healing.
And now it's a whole area of...
It's still a thing.
It's still a thing.
Is it a cluster?
It is now because it was, it became a cluster of dry cleaning shops.
Yeah, it's a perfect cluster.
And so it is actually a real cluster in every sense of the word.
No, we don't know that.
But is, is health a cluster in?
Healthcare is.
Healthcare is a cluster, yeah. So, you know, consistent with the regional hub, nature and the aging population.
No, mention of the like twelve Brattleboro theaters.
Was there?
There were, yeah.
Twelve?
See, when we get, become a certified local government, then we can get some funding and we can do some cool stuff.
Yep.
Josh will be in charge of clusters.
He'll be expert by then.
I still don't understand what clusters are.
Okay. We'll, we'll make some time. I'll...
We should send him the smokes, chasing smoke stack and economic gardening articles and...
Oh, yeah, right.
Should grow clusters.
I understand what a cluster of something is, but I don't understand what a cluster of relations do.
An industrial cluster.
Clusters can, yeah.
You meet the definition.
I'll have to do some research on my own and then I'll know what this is.
Okay, are we ready for municipal facilities and services? Chapter ten. There's no number there either.
You're really on that. Excellent.
I can count.
So I have a question about Putney Road and, uh, policy ten point four. I guess I was just curious because of the rezoning that was done out there and the hope for certain kinds of development out on Putney Road. If, if there is an action that can be identified in this that relates to that, to show the town's commitment to further development? Or if it has all it's...
It, it has it out there. I mean, if some of the infill parcels were to be developed, there would need to be new connections. But the water and sewer is out there. This one, I think, is a leftover from several...
Plans ago.
Several plans and...
Should we get rid of it?
I think ten point four doesn't need to exist.
Are there areas that should have extension of water service?
It's pretty minor. I mean...
Then let's get rid of it.
You know, it's more like at the back, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bringing this originally and it was pretty expensive everywhere.
Right. I mean, all I'd say is if, you know, some really deep parcels, it might be on the road frontage, but if you're going to subdivide the property or, or develop at the back, you know, you've got a, you've got a challenging distance to go, but it's not like you're in, right? So I think ten point four gets to go.
Okay, any other comments on municipal facilities?
In ten point nine and ten point ten, wondering if accessibility and diversity could be noted or incorporated at all in the language there?
Maybe ten point, ten point nine one.
Yeah, I was going to say, you don't think ten point nine one covers accessibility and diversity?
Do you want those key words? Is that what you said?
Uh, I'm... I am saying I would love to see the word diversity in there as well as accessibility to...
Which group is being left out?
I would say that cultural inclusivity is sometimes an issue, not like arts and culture, culture, but to sort of go along with the trends in diversity, especially among the kids in our community, that it might be nice to at least acknowledge that that diversity exists and that there's some idea of being or feeling more inclusive that way.
Okay, I don't think I understand, but I'm all for diversity, so.
So trans friends going to the swimming pool.
Oh, okay.
Which way do they go?
Yeah, thanks. That's a, that's a helpful example.
Yeah.
So there's, yeah.
Promote all-inclusive recreational activity. Changing the wording.
All right, let's, we'll...
I, I don't know what like standard putting diversity words in there looks like, but...
No, actually, it's good.
And then wondering if arts could be acknowledged somewhere in recreational activities for parks and in park programming.
It could be added in with the beautification project, ten point, ten point two, which is actually now ten point nine.
Anything else for?
Um, this, on page seventy-two, we talk about Union Station. I don't think anybody refers to the museum building as Union Station anymore, do they?
Only grants.
My grandfather does.
I think we should call it the museum.
Yeah.
Where, where are we?
Page seventy-two. There's a heading called Union Station.
I know. I, I don't know who would pull that right yet.
Kind of has significance from a funding standpoint, labeling it Union Station.
Oh, really?
That's how we got the money.
Interesting.
I mean, we could do Union Station slash BMAC, but I wouldn't want it to be interpreted that we own a museum, we own the building, but we don't own their...
Yeah, it, it's a little bit...
There are some desires to improve the train station still, so calling it Union Station has a...
And, and make, and rejuvenating our rein, you know, reminding people that that is in fact the station. That also happens to be BMAC is part of that, I guess.
Actually, the station tied with the tourist transportation thing as well.
Yeah, it would be sort of hazardous to take it out.
Hazardous.
Alrighty, on the, the table on page seventy-three, DePaul, is it called DePaul Park? Union Station Park?
Uh, the green space, the mountain.
The green space?
Yeah, it's not on the chart. And then there are a couple of, a couple of amenities I thought left off of some of the parks.
Okay.
And there's stages.
Oh, excellent.
There's a stage at the Gibson-Aiken Center, a stage at Living Memorial Park, also a cathedral and cabins at Living Memorial Park. Yeah, an outdoor cathedral. It's wonderful. There's an amphitheater at Thomas Lynch Park.
Is it really there?
I mean, it's there. It's got a waterfront in the middle of it.
It does have that.
Which makes it wonderful.
It's just a grassy slope, but is that really, was it?
Around the...
Yeah.
I, okay, sure.
I haven't seen it yet.
Wells Fountain Park also has a stage.
Haven't seen it yet, but I live in Memorial Park, it's supposed to have a dog park.
Oh, yeah. I added dog park.
Dog park and dog park.
Yes, we are.
Yes, that's mentioned in the, uh...
In the text.
In the text.
Yeah, yeah. Those are, thank you.
I could share this with the rest of the room because...
Can you have it?
Yeah.
If you get, if you get the bus on a bad day, yes, you probably could.
That's all I'm asking now.
Just keep it up. Just keep on calling him, going, can I have it, can I have, can I have?
York?
Can I have it? Keep calling him up, just randomly, like different times of the day.
Someday he'll give it to me.
Just give it.
Where's the stage?
Against the...
Doesn't the museum have a deal for the archery building?
What's that, sir?
The museum have a deal for the archery building?
No.
Nope. People come along, get very excited and then do their due diligence and become less excited.
That's one of the asks for it for free.
Even when it's for free.
Even when it's for free.
Nothing's for free. Nothing, all right.
I don't want that anymore.
Right, exactly. Right. Yeah, it's not an asset. It's just a pit. All right.
Anymore on whatever chapter that was?
Okay, uh, municipal sub of natural resources.
So I chopped out a whole bunch of flood hazard stuff in here, so I'm just going to point out this about, yeah, three, four minutes before seven thirty.
Do we need to vote on something?
No, that clock is wrong. It's, it's seven nineteen.
Seven nineteen.
Ten more minutes.
Oh, it's like a bar clock.
Well, I mean, I think we'd like it, if, if you're comfortable, I think we would like to get to the end of this and have you say, okay, go make these changes and we'll put it to public hearing, knowing that you can still tweak after that.
Sure. Well, we have fifteen minutes, so should we see what we can do to finish up? It's just two more steps. And then we'll all go help Casey write her paper.
My son's paper.
Yeah.
Non prospective in the workplace. Non prospective disorderism. I decided on the MBA, guys. I'll tell you more in a minute.
Okay, natural resources.
Excellent.
Anybody?
Invasive species? They're, they're unnatural. Do we not mention invasive?
No, you do. I was saying I thought...
Go.
A big part of it, the conservation commission is working on.
All right. Anything else?
Anybody? You all are?
Yes.
Okay, land use. Ta-da!
I'm wondering if we can include a connection to or sense of place in goal A.
I like that idea.
Community pride. I don't know, I don't know what you want to call it, but...
Sense of place is...
Sense of place, we like that.
I like that a lot.
Can you say it again? Where is it again?
Goal A.
It's not A, we're adding it.
Adding sense of place.
Maybe we could put something in twelve point one point four about sense of place.
Okay.
Anything else?
It's great. This is a really long chapter. This is the one that we threw in the flood resiliency planning and we cut stuff out, so I don't know if...
I was really pleased with our conversation on this last time around, so I did not read it.
I think...
There's an extreme. Actually, there's several extremes on page 77.
Yeah.
As long as you know it.
Well, this is really the heart of the plan.
Yep.
So I don't have a problem with it being wrong.
Well, and we threw stuff in to satisfy the state.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of criteria here.
Yep.
I know there is a goal about industrial development. There's a lot of talk. We have another section about, I guess it's the economic development section, about impact on... respecting the physical environment with economic development strategies. I was just wondering if we want to mention something or tie industrial development and the idea of physical impact together somehow in how we talk about 12.6.
I think there's certainly something that could be said. I don't know if it'd be in the policy or the action, but yeah.
Just as far as what does that mean? I feel like that's where we could explain what that means.
We want to, just going back to something Rod said earlier, don't take this runway, because I'm all for, you know, environmentally conscious industry.
Yes.
But would we want to be careful about how we word it in a way that doesn't make it sound like we're trying to be necessarily burdensome to new economic development? Because I think somebody, say, looking to create a new industrial business in Brattleboro would be encountering environmental impact review and is part of that process, as part of the application process. So I'm not sure.
Would it be scary if it were in the plan? Or would it be more transparent?
Would it be more transparent versus...
If we said, hey, heads up, this is in our development review guidelines. You're gonna encounter this stuff.
So take a look at page 88, because we kind of get it. So what we did when we were doing the zoning is before we had these industrial zoning districts and they allowed a lot of non-industrial uses in them. And then when you would have something that was...
And small parcel size.
Yes, small parcels. So basically, you know, there was a whole assortment of commercial uses that could be in there, and they would take up small lots, and then we really didn't have land for larger scale industrial. We still don't have a ton because we have such topographical challenges. But what we tried to do, or what we were successful in doing in the land use regulations is basically, you know, keeping it with some of the heavier industrial uses so that the environmental impact wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be as great. And putting... So then we have the performance standards where, so if they are emitting a lot of odors or, you know, there's other safeguards in place, which is kind of addressed here. I don't know if this gets at what you're thinking or not enough.
What paragraph? I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of a paragraph.
Page 88, look at number 5, probably the second paragraph.
And I'm trying to make something on page 1 jive with industrial, yeah.
So when we vote tonight, this isn't set in stone. We can still come back and revisit and change.
Yeah, there's gonna... Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, so to be more explicit, we've got uses at both Exit 1 Industrial Park and to some extent, the industrial district off the top of Putney Road there off Ferry Road that are not really industrial. You know, they're auto repair shops or the VA clinic and those kinds of things, which could be, you know, anywhere, almost. And that they prevent a more programmatic and large-scale development of industrial activity in those areas. And so most of what this language was designed to do, remembering it was written before the land use regulations went into effect, was to increase the minimum parcel size and to make sure that industrial development of a really genuinely industrial kind was focused on those two industrial districts. We've got more space that we could use, but it... And, you know, those things like access to 91 and a whole bunch of things, and traffic congestion and those other factors are really important. But I think that's mostly what we were driving at. I think the physical environment question, it's interesting to think about how to link that back. I can't quite think of it right now, but I think it's a good thing to tie it back to.
Anything else?
Maybe just sort of amending that strategy to not just say having demands on the transportation system, but any other additional adverse impacts that you want to note in there. If you're a ikky business, go check out our industrial area.
Okay, so it sounds like we need to vote.
We do, we're done?
We do.
Oh, all right. Let's have someone make a motion that we accept the town plan as we've just gone through.
I move that we accept it or we put it out to public hearing or...
I would say that you put it to public hearing with the changes discussed tonight.
That's what I move.
Want a second now? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you have it.
Awesome.
And our next meeting is March 5.
So it's in our interest to get this to public hearing as soon as we can, which might mean trying to set up a special meeting just to have a public hearing. So if you see an email from me during the hearing, because I can't do it for the March 5 date. I don't think I've got enough time. Because I think we're at like 30 days or 31 days right now, so it's not going to be out. I'm going to need at least a couple of days to make changes and...
And if that would be the case, would you want to cancel our March meeting in favor of this, whatever this later date is?
Do that.
It can be up to you. I'm fine with that.
I think that would be lovely.
It seems to be attractive to some of you.
I mean, if we could even just make the public hearing the next Monday.
I think the next Monday could work.
Yep.
In terms of having enough time to be able to warrant it to the statute as I need to.
Would she for that?
Should we shoot for that?
Sure.
The second Monday.
And that would be the...
12 is the second.
Yeah, the 12. And it's a public hearing. We might try to do it at like 6.
What is it?
So it's the 12th, March the 12th. Okay.
We can invite all our friends.
Yep.
Yes.
Is it there will be a trivia?
It will. It's basically a little bit more formal. We'll probably sit in a different arrangement so that people want to come.
We did that one time.
And all the throngs of people will come. It'll be great.
All the throngs? We got like three?
No, not even.
We're lucky.
Sometimes.
That was really a surprise. That was freaky.
When we were talking about the development regulation,
Oh, yeah, that's right.
There were quite a few people here.
Maybe not, but I still thought it was freaky.
But when we were reviewing them when I was on a year ago, nobody came.
No, but originally.
Oh, yeah.
Quite a few.
Cool.
Yeah, it's always a possibility. All right.
All right.
We said?
Let's adjourn. Thank you.
I thought we were writing your paper in.
So we made the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, sure.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay!